And I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T, U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Abba Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Brian Harbison to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Will you pray with me? Almighty God, we thank you for the blessings of life today. We thank you for your blessings on us, our great city. And God, we just pray your wisdom today on this council with the decisions and choices we're making. God, we pray for our mayor, his administration, that you'll continue to provide the wisdom he needs in the decisions he makes each day. Be with us in our business today. We promise to give you the praise and glory. Thank you for your son, Jesus, and what he's done for us and is doing. And in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll have an update from our EMA. I hope you have some good news. We were kind of down and out last Tuesday.
Well, I wish, I wish I had better news for you today.
All right.
But as we've begun to say at the office, it is what it is. So as of 9:30 this morning, we are at 4,341 total cases in Etowah County, with 51 of those resulting in death. Our positive test rate continues to trend up. We are currently at 12.64 percent this week. You'll remember last week, our seven-day average was 25.6 cases for every seven days. Today, we are now adding 35.86 on average each seven-day period. So it doesn't take a mathematician to see that our numbers continue to rise. There's been a lot of social media and mainstream discussion about the COVID numbers lately, and it's important for leaders and citizens alike to have facts. Facts are not based on what I think the numbers say, or what somebody at the grocery store thinks that the numbers say. Facts are just that. They're based in science, they're based in data, and they're based in reason formulated by those in the fields of research and epidemiology, or disease research. I've chosen one such expert's viewpoint to share with you today to maybe bring some clarity, and also, at the same time, underscore how important it is today for us to continue doing the right thing. Dr. Michael T. Osterholm is currently the Director of the Center for Infectious Disease and Research. He's a Regents Professor, McKnight Presidential Endowment Chair in Public Health. 24 years he worked for the Minnesota Department of Public Health. The last 15 of those, he was the state epidemiologist. He's led numerous investigations of outbreaks of international importance, including foodborne diseases, hepatitis B, HIV, and healthcare settings, as well as many others. From June 2018 through May of 2019, he was the Science Envoy for Health Security on behalf of the United States State Department. So suffice it to say, Dr. Osterholm is what I would consider as an expert. He recently gave two televised statements, and I want to read both of those to you today so we can all understand, as citizens and as leaders, what we're looking at, what the prospect of this pandemic is if it remains unchecked. Dr. Osterholm, in the Meet the Press interview televised on October the 18th, 2020, says, and I quote, "You know, this is our COVID year. Let's accept it. It's not like the last year, and it's not hopefully going to be like next year. So if you really love the people that you have in your immediate family, think through this, and actually give them the greatest gift of all this season. And that is distance yourself this year and don't expose them." He made a similar comment on the CBS News on October the 13th, 2020, and he said, I quote, "I don't believe that this infection really is being transmitted in waves. It's more like a coronavirus forest fire, where in fact, it just burns and burns and burns. As soon as you let up the fire break, then it all comes back again, and you've lost what progress you have made." In our county, we have made great strides in the past on combating this pandemic. As a city, as a county, as various municipalities, as public leaders, we've made significant strides. Unfortunately, we're taking steps back, and we have to, we have to stem that tide if we are going to see success at the end of the day. In closing, I would say this, even with statements and research from a very well-defined expert, there will be those who dispute the seriousness of the COVID pandemic. We can't help that. But we, as a society, must again seriously approach the issue and take the pandemic in earnest. Numbers have been emphasized since mid-February, and it doesn't seem to be underscoring to most of the people in our population the importance of personal protective action. As an agency, we are doubling up on our public education efforts. We are providing additional training to those in high-risk situations, and we continue to work closely with our public health partners at the Alabama Department of Public Health to increase information and awareness. Now, guys, understand, I'm not a, I'm not a fear-mongering kind of guy. I'm just not. I am a logic and reason. One of my life quotes is from the great Sir Arthur Conan Doyle that says, "Once you've eliminated the impossible, whatever remains, however improbable, must be the truth." And the truth is that our numbers continue to rise. One loss is too many. So I personally base my approach to incidents with sound logic and data, but if we do not reevaluate our own adherence to the safety protocols that have been suggested by the governor, by the State Department of Public Health, by the Center for Disease Control, by astounding research people who have far greater intuition and wisdom than I could ever have, if we don't do all those things, we're going to find ourselves standing here again six months from now, and we will be wondering why our numbers continue to rise. So with that, I will be glad to answer any questions that I might can, can answer for folks.
Yes, Josh, I'd like to answer you one question. I was in a big store this weekend.
Yes, sir.
Half the people didn't have masks on, and the escalator was standing there at work there. How come they wasn't abiding by the rules and said, the manager said they didn't, he wasn't going to tell them to? So what can we do to make those businesses abide by the rules with the mask?
Not absolutely a thing. Unfortunately, it falls to each individual business to make that decision. Now, you know, it can be enforceable through the Department of Public Health. I know the police department has gone out and investigated several cases of businesses specifically that were not using the mask guidelines and the ordinances. We just have to be vigilant in our public education, and we have to make sure that, you know, we mean what we say. And Councilman, I don't, I don't know how best to address that specific situation other than potentially, you know, going out and trying to communicate with that business owner the importance of, of taking the personal precautions and to take it seriously. I, I too was in a similar situation here in town recently, was in a store, and I counted probably, I think I got to 45 when I quit. I don't know how many were in the store, but 45 didn't have their masks on. People just aren't. The problem, as I see it, is people aren't translating the numbers to the severity and to the death. You know, it's kind of like when a meteorologist looks at a weather map. He sees things in that map that we don't see. We see reds and greens and blues and yellows. Somebody who is a trained meteorologist sees that information, is able to interpret the data. The average person isn't. And I think that's where a lot of this comes from, is because people just aren't seeing it enforced. Now, we've seen some really good businesses who their business model has caused their rates to be extremely low. We've seen other areas where we've discussed, you and I have discussed, some of the hotspots before, you know, with Alabama City and the homeless population. We've seen an increase in Walnut Park in the past. So, you know, I think we just have to double down on our education and try to mimic what we expect others to do. We have to wear a mask every time, because I promise you, the one time you don't wear it into the grocery store, that'll be the one time that somebody whips out that iPhone and snaps that picture and says, "Well, you know, so-and-so, and this and that," and you know how social media is.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Do you have any information on our local hospitals?
The last report that we had, they, they both, on our conference call last Wednesday, had both seen a minor uptick in the number of cases. What I will say, on a positive note of, for both hospitals, they both have received their state-provided ventilators now, and those are here local. They are in stock at both hospitals. So should we see an continued increase in the trend rising, where patients need to be on ventilatory support? There are enough ventilators now locally that, that both hospitals feel fairly confident in the fact that they'll be able to handle any surge that happens. Anything else?
Thank you.
All right. Y'all have a blessed day.
Okay, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Human Relation Advisory Committee work session and council meeting that was held October 20th.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of October the 16th through the 22nd.
So move.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor's not here. Unfinished business. Ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1535 Litchfield Avenue, District 1. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on September the 22nd. What is the pleasure of the council? I move for a debate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition or in favor of a resolution, or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 301 Harden Circle in District 1, Dexter, Dwayne, Harold being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Builder Department. We filed this case in January of this year. It involves trash and debris and abandoned vehicles. This is the second time in the last couple of years that we've been before this body concerning this same problem. We've had nine cases since 2012 on this property stemming from abandoned vehicles and, and other issues. We're asking for a resolution today to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to a debate.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 902 Rose Wood Lane in District 2, State of Alabama, and possible right of redemption of David K. Green being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in June of 2019. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Move to a debate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 1516 Malone Street in District 3, State of Alabama, being the last known owner. Owner, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone speak in favor?
Madam President, this is state-owned property, and the case involves a, a dead tree. That we need a resolution to be able to go onto this property and cut that tree. We're asking for that today. Thank you.
Yep, that's a tree. Sure is two of them right there beside each other.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 1224 Malone Street in District 3. Diane J. Glass has been the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Madam President, based on recent improvements, we're going to ask that this table, this case be tabled for 30 days. Thank you.
Okay. What is the pleasure of the council?
Ask to table for 30 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 1203 Short Spruce Street in District 5. This is Ellis Blunt and Loretta Blunt and William and Patricia Turner being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in June of 2019. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Move to a debate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Although I do want to say, that's in better shape than the last three houses I lived in in college.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 1318 Ellis Avenue in District 6. This is Helen Clay in care of J.C. Clay being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak?
Yes, I would.
Okay, if you'll come and give your name and address, please.
My name is J.C. Clay.
Okay. Your address? Your address?
3318 Ellis Avenue. I need to know what is happening on this house, because I hadn't got anything, just appearing cold.
Mr. Clay?
Oh, Brian, have you got a, a copy of what was supposed to be done to this house?
Yeah. And that, that was sent to you over here.
Well, I didn't get it.
And my wife already got the permit to do some work on it, and she said you should have a copy of it.
Yeah, there's a copy in the file. I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Okay. I'll do whatever's necessary. Mr. Clay, this house has been condemned for a year and four months. And this actually is not the first time we've had this house before. Remember a few years? Before? Okay, let me finish here, okay? Before you came last time, you promised me we was going to get this house taken care of. Does this house mean a lot to you?
Well, it's my mother-in-law's house.
You don't live in this house, so correct?
Yes.
Could you, and you got the permit today, the building permit today, to work on it? We should have got this thing a long time ago, Mr. Clay, and I like you and everything, and I know you and you're a friend of mine, but, you know, we got to do something about this, this house right here. I'm going to go ahead and abate the nuisance, and we really probably shouldn't have gave you the building permit today, but we did anyway. So I'm going to ask to abate the nuisance, but I'm going to give you 30 days to bring the outside up to code, okay? You have 30 days, and if, if you don't do it in 30 days, they'll come and push it down. I don't want you to lose your house, but I don't want you coming up here every couple of years, we go through the same thing with it. That's why I want to know if it means, the house means something to you.
I'm going to put it up and sell it while you're busy.
Well, I just want to make sure that this time, we won't be back again. Well, you're going to get it fixed for us this time, so we won't have to go in through this again, okay? Like I said, if it means something to you, I want you to keep the house, and I want you to bring it up to code. But we, every couple of years, we just keep coming back. You understand me? What I'm, what I'm getting at here? Because it's just going further and further down the house.
I understand.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clay.
Thank you. I'll get to the front door.
Is there anyone speaking up in favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in June of 2019. I want to thank Councilman Cannon for presenting my case today. There have been no improvements to this property. It's the second time this case has been before this body. We're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
Okay.
I make a motion that we abate this nuisance, but give Mr. Clay 30 days to bring this house up to code. Then after 30 days, if it's not, proceed with the abatement, please.
Second.
And Mr. Clay is here, and he, he knows what we're talking about.
Can we do that?
We doing two things in one.
Well, I want him to make sure that we give him, I want to abate the nuisance, but he knows he has 30 days to bring it up to code.
Okay, so what we're going to do is just abate, we're going to abate the nuisance.
That's right, but he has.
But he know, but he knows in your heart that you're going to give him 30 days.
And Mr. Harbison's heart, too. We've already talked about this one.
Second to a debate.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, to be fair and honest, I'm going to ask you a question, Mr. Harbison. How was he able to obtain a building permit after it was on the list? Because I know we've had other cases, and they weren't able to obtain a building permit.
There was a mistake made today.
He shouldn't have been able to get one.
Okay, I just want the people to know that, because I'm about what's right, what's right and fair for everybody.
Once a hearing is fed, you, once a hearing is fed, you, our policy is not to issue permits.
Okay. People, y'all hear that?
Okay. There was just a mistake made today.
Our next item is awarding a bid number 3443 for Walker Street Drainage Improvement. The city engineer has recommended the bid be awarded to the Alabama Grading and Excavation LLC, and the amount is $42,250. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next item is a resolution authorizing agreement with Lead Online LLC, and this is for the Gadsden Police Department to have access to data for use in investigations, and the amount is $9,330 annually for a three-year term, starting December the 1st, 2020. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one, ask for unanimous consent. So a resolution authorizing a Thanksgiving dinner event at the Coffee Community Center.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move to adopt, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, Madam President, I have one. This is coming from the Industrial Development Authority. This is a resolution authorizing a tax abatement agreement with Prince Metal Stamping. The total project investment on behalf of the business is $45,765,000. So that's fantastic. Thank you to Prince Metal Stamping for investing in Gadsden. I'd like to make a motion that we consider this unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Just a word or note on that, that'd be also just of increasing some jobs. So we look forward to the company investing again in Gadsden. Any department reports?
Madam President, I have, I guess, more of a public service announcement than, than a report. We've had some inquiries in the clerk's office about voting locations, and although this is not a city election, I thought it might be good to be helpful in the election for the first Tuesday in November, presidential election, among other offices. Two of the voting locations within the city have been combined and moved. Wallace Hall will not be a voting place. East Gadsden Community Center will not be a voting place. Both of those have been consolidated, and people will go to the Union Hall at 110 Hope Street on voting day. The other locations within the city limits will be the same as before. Nakalula, Kiwanis Pavilion, Elliott Community Center, Carver Community Center, North Gadsden or Thompson Community Center, the former Gadsden High School, Walnut Park Community Center, and the Downtown Civic Center. Walnut Park Community Center, and the Downtown Civic Center, Metta Brook Baptist Church.
Okay.
Those are all within the city. There are other places outside the city, but I just wanted to deal with those.
Okay. Okay.
I'm glad you did that because I got a call to make an announcement this morning about East Gaston, so.
Councilman Williams, we'll start with you. Any, any comments or announcements?
Yes, thanks, Madam. Thank you, Madam President. Do want to thank the EMA for the very enlightening commentary that was offered today and the update. Again, it is very, very much important for us to continue to take this pandemic event very seriously. And, you know, let's, let's make sure that we shy away from the direction of the non-experts in this, in this, in this event. Because there are so many people out there who are misleading and misguiding, that are misleading and misguided others for the sake of just being heard. And, and I think that's really unfortunate, but, so again, let's just be safe and be smart. I do want to take the opportunity also, last week, we conducted an interview as a, as a, as our second Human Relations Committee meeting. We conducted an interview with Ron Hall Jr. I do want to publicly thank Mr. Hall for taking the time out of his very, very busy schedule to, to meet with us and talk with us about our committee and the issues that are important to that committee. And if you took the opportunity to either read the, the media coverage of it or, or actually listen to the, the interview, he was, he offered some very insightful feedback as it relates to that. And again, this is someone who has access to a board or a group of stakeholders who have the ability to invest millions in a community. And he talked about how important it was for communities to project themselves a certain way. He also talked about the dialogue and the way that that, that dialogue should, should take place. So, so again, I do want to thank him for that. And, and we look forward to, you know, when, when things get back to normal to some degree. We look forward to having him in, in Gaston at some point. He comes to Alabama quite often because of his business interest here, but we do look forward to having him here at some point. I also wanted to take the opportunity to remind people to educate themselves about the six amendments that are on the ballot. These are six Alabama amendments that'll be on the ballot along with the presidential race and some of the other candidates that are out there. Probably the most intriguing of those six is Amendment Four. Amendment Four is essentially going to do some cataloging of the, of the, the Alabama Constitution. And it also is going to remove, it's a long time coming, but it's going to remove racist language. It passed through the state legislature without a dissenting vote to become a ballot initiative. And I think that's very telling. I do applaud the state legislature for their foresight in that. And I hope that the outcome of that amendment is reflected, is reflected of what happened with the, with the legislature. Because we will look very bad as a state if that, if that amendment doesn't pass. So, so again, I look forward to having the opportunity to vote in favor of Amendment Four and the changes that come with it. And again, want to encourage people, I know it's not ideal, the circumstances under which we're being asked to come out and vote. But, you know, now's, you know, as good a time as any to participate. And, and definitely vote in an election because people died for us to have that right. Thank you.
Councilman Williams?
Yes, Madam President. I just want to reiterate the Thanksgiving dinner at Carver Community Center. We have feed from 11:00 to 2:00, and it's open to the public. So anyone that lives in the city of Gaston is welcome to come. You will not be able to eat inside. We will give you a to-go plate to take. And we also will be delivering. And as of right now, I just spoke with Ms. Darlene Hargrove. And we have three other sites. And they're going to do a news release and all that. And they're trying to get some more sites. So this is in lieu of them doing the big Thanksgiving dinner, lunch at the venue because of COVID. So they're going to try to do it in each community, several communities. And also I want to reiterate what Ms. Iverson said about the voting places in East Gaston. You will vote at the Union Hall there on Hope Street. So please go out and vote. I know as of the day before yesterday, we've had over 4,000 people send in their absentee ballots or vote in person at the, absentee at the judicial building. So please go vote. It's your right. It's your community responsibility to go in your civic duty to go vote. So, thank you.
Councilman Cannon?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to say I really appreciate the Alabama Sea Cathedral Place Church. Saturday, they had drive-through trick-or-treats for the kids. It worked out well. I just want to applaud them for everything they did for the kids that afternoon. Had a bunch come through there. Everybody was wearing masks. And that brings me to Treats on Wall Street will be this Thursday from 5:00 to 7:00 at a start on Forest Avenue. All the side roads were blocked off with the exception of Sansom Avenue going towards Tala right there. It will still be up where you can get out. The whole front part of, of where the gun shop is, Jerry's Pharmacy, the gazebo. Now it'll be blocked off. And you'll turn right there in front of Jerry's Pharmacy and go down Sansom to get out. We're expecting a crowd, but it will start on Forest Avenue. So if you'll just line up on Forest. We've got the, the police lined up. It should go really smooth. Nobody can get out of their cars. We're trying to make this a COVID-free event for the kids. We didn't want to let them miss out. But we couldn't have five or 6,000 people down there like we usually do every year. We've been doing this for, I guess, 49 years. So we want to make sure we didn't miss this year. So please just come out in your car and be ready for a good time for the kids. They're going to have to get out, just hold your little bags out and go get all the candy and the prizes they want that night. Also, I want to turn to last week's council meeting. I wasn't here. And I was notified on the internet where Gina Fleming's Morris talked about y'all guys. And just so happened, I looked at the council meeting. Hardly ever do it, but me and my dog were sitting there and we didn't have anything to do and it was on and I was watching. And she's right. Sometimes this gets awful boring, guys. She wanted somebody to say a joke. She wants somebody to do something. And Gina's right. Gina, if I was here and I knew you wanted to say a joke, I would ask Councilman Wilson. He's always got jokes on him. And you said something about wanting Kent to do something. Well, I see Kent. I heard it last week. Got a little click on that pen. He says he don't do it. I'm pretty sure I heard that. And I think instead of you wanting to be the assistant mayor, we really need a, like a sponsor on the council to help us guys up here. Ms. Toes and Iva really can't keep us all going. So we need somebody out there to hold up signs for us or kind of help us with what we're doing up here to make these council meetings pretty live. We've had about over 1,000 watches every week. I don't want the numbers to go down. So Gina, if you could help us any way, I sure would appreciate it. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Reed?
What does this lady have on you? That's what I want to know.
I think Gina's got her hands full with Billy. That and mustard on his hot dogs and all that good stuff. Give an old charmer a bad time. I'm for that 100%.
If you don't mind, Ben, could you, could you give her some mustard? I don't have any mustard at your house.
I know. That's the whole problem. If y'all come down here, we'll give her some mustard. Hey, I do want to remind everybody about nuisance laws, keeping your grass cut, littering the yards, and this sort of thing. It takes one in a neighborhood to drag the whole neighborhood down. So it'd be nice if everybody would conform with that and go with the nuisance abatement laws. At the same time, be a good neighbor. Watch the other neighbor's house. You, you can be nosy and be helpful because crime limits are going up every day around here. People are starting to steal. So be a good neighbor and a nosy one. And report suspicious people in the neighborhood. The police department will come out and investigate and get them out there. The main thing is, please, please, all the neighborhoods, keep your yard up. It looks bad for the rest of the neighbors. Fellow guys.
Councilman Wilson?
I, I don't have anything. Thank you.
You've been warned, haven't you, son?
Councilman Bag?
Well, thank you, Madam President. I want to echo earlier sentiments about Prince Metal Stamping, a $45 million investment in Gaston. Gaston is open for business. There's a lot of work that goes on kind of quietly behind the scenes. Frankie Davis and the mayor and the mayor's office, David Hooks and Bill Green at the IDA. There's, there's a lot of good things happening. It just sometimes doesn't happen as quick as we all want it to happen. Just like having to wear these masks, we, we all want to stop and it's not going to happen real quick. But we just have to stay the course and keep doing what's right and, and good things will happen. I think you can take that and put it across any kind of discipline as far as industrial recruitment or COVID. Just do the right thing. Treat people the way you want to be treated. And hopefully, things will turn out real well for all of us. I would also like to, I don't have a, I don't have a pen that clicks. I don't know. Maybe we're hearing things in our old age. I don't know. But I do have a joke for her. I'll, I'll say, Gina, what do you call a boomerang that, that won't come back? It's a stick. So I'll end on that. Thank you.
I got one more thing. I'm sorry.
Please don't tell me a joke.
No, I'm not telling no joke. This is serious.
Okay.
The other day, I got a caller, we had a female that was driving a vehicle and they smoked some kind of drugs. And this is, this is real, people. This clone of whatever they're smoking. She was flopping around, got out of her car, flopping around in the middle of the street and in a mud puddle. The water right on the edge of the sidewalk. There was two females in the vehicle. One, the other one got out and ran. And we know we had to call the police and the medics. And the other one got about a block and a half away, and she was on the ground flopping and rolling around too. So I don't know what they're putting on these drugs, but people, please stop doing this. Stop. It, it is, it's an epidemic. And it is just sad. You know, you can't help people if they don't want to be helped. First, they're going to have to want to get out these drugs. But this stuff, you don't know what people are putting on, in these drugs when you're smoking it. So that's all I want to say. Ms. Toes, I forgot, we had a long-time employee that retired about this time last year, Bobby Hill. He's been married to his wife for a long, long time. He called me today and said that she was in the hospital on the ventilator and it wasn't looking really good for her right now. And he asked us today, when we said our prayers tonight, if we would pray for her.
Okay. And that's a lot of other families that are out there hurting. And so we just have to, we have to do that. I don't have any jokes. I just have one thing. I asked for a motion to adjourn.